All right, good morning. It is November 12th. It's a special day for a regular meeting only with yesterday being Remembrance Day. We have no additions to the agenda on item one, no business arising out of the minutes. So we'll go straight to presentations with item 3.1. We have Genesis House. Carrie Cowenhoffin and Ange Brown. Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Cowenhoffin, close.
Cowenhoffin, okay, sorry. Carrie Cowenhoffin and Ange Brown protecting item 3.1, so we recognize that.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to join your meeting this morning. We'll try to stick to our timeframe. We've become a well-oiled machine, Carrie and I. Genesis House is a shelter for abused women and their children. We're located in Winkler. And we are dedicated to protecting and empowering women to make their own life choices. So our service area is quite large. And we have 16 beds, which looks like five bedrooms. And we could have five women and 11 children at one time. We've been in operation for 35 years. And I think, yeah, Patrick's got the service area up there now. So our service area is quite large. So while we're located in Winkler, anyone that calls our crisis line that's in that kind of that orange section there should be automatically directed to our shelter, which is kind of from a safety first perspective. Cell phones have created some trouble with that because depending on who your provider is, you might be directed somewhere else. So we always check when we answer the crisis line that the person is calling the shelter they think they're calling. So, and so that's our service area. It's quite large.
Whenever we go to places, I try and talk a little bit about what abuse looks like because a lot of people think that it's physical, which is kind of common. If there's bruises, then physical violence is happening. However, we would also say that abuse can be sexual. This can include, this can be in a marital relationship. These are some of the things that we have seen with women that do come into our shelter. The use of technology has changed things. So there's blackmail, manipulation, especially with our younger generation. We see the blackmail of using technology. Financial, this is quite prominent in our area. There are some women that have nothing in their name. So no child tax credits. They're given an allowance to go grocery shopping. They have no access to cars. It's basically, they are told that this is what they're doing. And so we see a lot of financial abuse. Emotional and verbal abuse. So using words like weapons. And that sometimes for some of our women have said it's worse than physical abuse. The bruises they heal. But the emotional abuse, that kind of gets right in and that lowers your confidence and that's a little bit harder to work through. We see spiritual abuse. So I am the husband, you are the wife, this is just how it is. Some of those that come in have never, they don't read. So they are just told that this is how you are to live your life. And then we also see threats to loved ones. That might include children. It might also include pets. And that would be sexual abuse with both animals as well as children. We look at abuse as a sense of entitlement. The force behind the abuse is the belief that their feelings are more important than that of the woman or the child. An abuser wants power and control, whether or not it's physical, sexual, financial, emotional, verbal, spiritual.
So I've worked at the shelter on and off for over 20 years. And some of the things have changed. We got a new building in 1994 and it was awesome. It's still awesome. One of the things that hasn't changed in the time that I've worked there is in working with the women, what we hear. So I'll tell you a story about what our staff would hear on a regular basis. My children and I have been in shelter 17 times. The first time we accessed shelter, my youngest was only a few weeks old. My husband had a very tough childhood. I understood why, I understand why he acts the way he does to me. But there are times when it's just not safe for me and the kids to be in the same house with him. After he explodes in a fit of rage, he's always very sorry. In the beginning of the time between explosions was pretty long. Now though, it has gone shorter and shorter. I really love him and wish things could be the way they were in the beginning. We have tried counselling and church. I am not sure what it will take for him to finally change his behaviour. I keep forgiving him and the shelter keeps taking us in. I just want the abuse to stop. So what we hear from women is exactly that. Trying to find ways to get that abuse to stop, which is one of the reasons that women continue to stay in that relationship is with that hope and that love that that relationship will get better. So the services the shelter offers, of course, the primary service is that 24-hour crisis line, which is how women would access the emergency shelter. Every year we get one or two men that access shelter as well. We don't take them into our building, but we do provide services for them. We have support groups on a variety of different topics, primarily around the domestic violence. We do some things around parenting as well, anger management or conflict resolution. Right now, we're doing a Caring Dads program in Morden. So that's a pilot for us, an intervention program with men. So we're trying something different. We wouldn't be able to do that without separate grant funding because our mandate is really specific, women and kids. We do counselling, short term and long term. We work with kids that are in shelter, children and teens. We provide advocacy, which means if a person needs help getting to the doctor, lawyer, connecting with different services, we help with that. Follow-up services, so if a person wants to continue to see us or use our services after they've left shelter, or even if they've never been in shelter, you can do that. Lots of referrals because the area is so huge, the staff need to know what's available depending on which community the person's going to be residing in. So is there a family resource centre? Is there a food bank? So they have to know how to navigate all the communities in our service area. Resource centre, we provide support to other agencies that are trying to figure out as well, how do we approach this person? We think something's going on. Assistance in protection planning, support for abused elderly, and of course, the 24-hour crisis line.
Now, those that access our crisis line are individuals that are experiencing domestic abuse. Family and friends. We sometimes have parents that call and say, "I just don't know what to do. My daughter's in this situation. I don't know how to help." I've had friends call me and say, "They're gonna go and pick up this woman and get her out of this situation." But they may not understand that domestic abuse, it's not just simply going to their house and getting them out of the situation. If you've been with somebody for 10, 15 years, it's emotional. You love that person. You've built a family with that person or a life with that person. It also can be very dangerous depending on the type of abuse that's happening. Service providers. I had a chance in September to be able to speak with our medical community and just talk a little bit about how we can be more collaborative in working with individuals that access our shelter. It's how the community accesses, so any other providers that need it in the area. We had 752 calls in 2018. And we are open 24 hours, seven days a week, and it is anonymous. My favourite word this year is navigate. There is somebody on the other end to help women and families navigate through their situation. So they may not leave, but they might wonder, "This is going on in our family. Is this, is this abuse? What does this look like? How can I seek assistance?" Someone there to listen. So those that use our services, our statistic is 1 in 4 have been or currently are in a situation where domestic abuse is present. It is your neighbour, it is your friend, it is your friend's mum. I've had people say, "I don't know of anybody." I'm like, because it's not talked about. Nobody sits around the dinner table and talks about domestic abuse. But I know several people that their families, they grew up and their mums used shelter. Every event that I have been to this summer, somebody has come to talk to me and said, "I've used your shelter," or "I was in a shelter." In fact, in fall, there was one event within the first half hour, three people approached me. It's those that don't have financial means to seek shelter elsewhere. Those that are trying to figure out the next step, they may not leave, but they might know that their child has been sexually abused and they might not be able to prove it, but they need to get their child out of the situation so that they can come up with the next plan. They are those that have no support from friends or family. They are either shunned or families giving them a hard time about leaving. Those that are isolated. We have a very unique area rather than the city because we have a lot of smaller communities and farmland that it's, some women are very isolated and if they have no access to a car, they are given their allowance to go to town, that sort of thing. Those whose husbands learn that this is just how you do a relationship. And those that, yeah, those who are just trying to figure out the next step. The reason why I say this is because a lot of people say, "I don't know anyone," or "it's not talked about." So I want to say that it's within our community and it might be the person sitting next to you. You don't know who is actually accessing our services.
So in our area, Carrie has said that 1 in 4 women have experienced violence in a current or previous relationship. Most of the women that we see are under 30 years old. And that means that the kids that we're seeing are also considerably younger than when I started working at the shelter. But we would still see kind of kids around 10, 11, 12. We occasionally still do see those kids. So yeah, children under 5 are the largest, the largest number of people we would actually see in shelter. Research shows that children who witness violence are more likely to grow up either to be the victim or the perpetrator, depending on which role. 67% of Canadians say they personally know at least one woman who has been sexually or physically assaulted. And the stat that we've been using is on average, every six days, a woman in Canada is killed by her intimate partner. But more recently, that stat has come out to say, every two and a half days, a woman or girl is killed by somebody she trusts in Canada.
I should also say too, in our shelter, on average, are three rooms or four.
Three, you said?
Three rooms or four.
Three families, yes.
Are you a shelter.
So what we are trying to do through these presentations is unmask domestic violence. What we believe is that physical, emotional, sexual and economic abuse toward another individual is violence. So it's not just the physical piece. Such violence is damaging and contrary to standards of reasonable behaviour in communities. We consider such violence to be a concern for all members of community. And we believe that victims and abusers should receive the assistance and support of their communities to make the changes they choose to make. So having an intervention program, a pilot of that with the Caring Dads for men, has been a test for us because we really, for myself, having worked in this for so long, our stats have continued to be exactly the same. Some of the intervention programs they're putting, that are happening across the country and actually across the world, are showing some real promise as far as making a difference with those stats. One of, even in Winnipeg, there was a program that was showing the recidivism rate over two years goes from 6 to 8% with no inter, 36 to 38% with no intervention. With intervention, 6 to 8%. So it goes down significantly when there is an opportunity to explore what's happening for you and to try to do things differently and have the support of some peers to do that. So what we need your help with, we need you to use your leadership to meet, to meet this topic head-on. This is a difficult topic, like Carrie said, nobody's talking about this around the dinner table. So we need the community and the leaders in the community to not back down from this topic and when you hear or see things in your community that are contrary to this. Support, support the accessibility of the services of Genesis House for the women and children that need it. And I'm not talking just about transportation, although we know that is an issue as well. But accessibility goes to the piece around believing the victim when they come forward. People don't make this up because it's too horrific and difficult to go through and the loss for the whole family is too great. So believing the victim and supporting the victim when they come forward. Challenging the stereotypes and ideas that perpetuate violence in our community. We need more voices. And one of the councils that we've been at, as we've been going through and we've met with, I think, six or eight at this point, one of the councils suggested, you know, our voice could be used as far as putting together a letter and sending that up the pipe to the province. Because what's been happening, the reason actually that's forced us into your council meetings, is that our funding has been stagnant for 12 years. So we haven't had a cost of living increase or any type of increase at all. So what that means is we've shaved away at the number of staff we have working to try to keep a 24-hour service. So that means there's just less resources for us to go around. And we're at a, at a point now where we're thinking, "I'm not sure what's next." So the idea of writing a letter to the minister that's responsible for us in the province, I thought was a terrific idea and came out of one of our council meetings. So it was an awesome idea. And of course, we are here to ask for your support also financially. So we based it on the census, the most recent census in 2016, and it's 50 cents a person, women, children and men, as we do believe this is a community concern. We have, our board is quite active. We have members throughout our region and have tried a variety of different things. Carrie, as part of what we're trying to do different is get out in front of it with different campaigns, the Caring Dads. We have an event coming up November 23rd at Menawasda Golf and Country Club. So we're trying different ways of generating our own revenue, but it's, it's difficult.
With no storefront, it is a little bit more of an issue. So I kind of say I'm the walking storefront. Trying to connect individuals and trying to allow people to be able to have some more information in regards to Genesis House. It is, they are very confidential, but it's not a confidential issue. So we're trying to connect with our community. Do you guys have any questions for us?
There's a few folks, Patrick, at the agency. I think if you, yeah, you can scroll through. A lot of times, people are interested. When families are in, the bedroom is their only private space. The rest is a shared space. So the kitchen, living room, playroom, laundry is a shared space.
Where in Winkler are you located? Can't tell you.
We're right downtown, actually. So when they picked our location, we were really fortunate for the foresight that the folks had when they decided. Because we are within walking distance of our urgent care clinic, within walking distance of our police station, like walking distance of our library. We're in a, in a great spot.
Part of the reason, part of the things this year was a lot of people think that it's a Winkler shelter, but it's not. And that's when we're trying to educate that this is, we go all the way from Treehurst, Sanford, Morris, Altona to the border, that this is self-central.
Okay, I'll ask a stupid question then. So if my wife was abused, why would she know where to go?
Starts with the crisis line.
Oh, your phone.
Yeah. We're a bit old-fashioned that way. I know with the, with the age, I've said that most of our clients are under 30. We need to be in a market where we can be texting because that's the choice, the mode of communication of that generation. And we just don't have the resources to do that.
So one thing too, is if people aren't aware of it, we try and get in the community, like we have our signs here that we try and get out even into washrooms, into change rooms, anywhere that we can that says, "If you need help." Because like we said, some women are very isolated. They might go to the doctor's office. Sometimes the husband is there with them. But we have been speaking with the physicians that if you see something that's a little off, try and see if you can do more of a one-on-one with the person. Washrooms, like some of our city council, they've put it out in some of the isolated areas and rec centres and churches and that sort of thing in the women's washroom so that they can actually see where they can go.
And the, most of the time, the women that call, well, a large percentage of the time, they don't have a vehicle of their own. So we have to do a risk assessment to sort out whether it's safe to send a taxi to where they are. Because we're not gonna want to send more people into a really risky situation. And if it's too risky, then we have to say, insist that we call the police if she wants to get service. But not all women want to involve the police. And so, and I think, yeah, you could speak to that. You're the first time actually in one of these presentations where we've had a police officer present. The zero tolerance is a bit of a love-hate relationship for us.
It is.
Yeah.
It's there for the right reason, but it creates other issues.
Yes, it does. Yeah, absolutely.
How long has your organisation been around?
35 years.
Okay.
We're not the oldest shelter in the province. We're one of 10. Probably oldest one is around 4.
Okay. But you say, like texting obviously is the way to communicate. Is it, your organisation doesn't have self?
The province hasn't set that up. So right now, this number is designed by the province and they, yeah, they organise all of that. And I think that, because they've, in the last couple of years, they've moved us from the department of families to the status of women. So then you lose a little ground because this new group has to learn about who we are and how it works. Yeah, I just think it's been a bit of a forgotten area. And so we've kind of just been, yeah, in the shadows.
So you're located in Winkler. Does City of Winkler give you their taxes back for anything?
We, actually, that's one of the things that works well for us. Manitoba Housing. We are located in a Manitoba housing building. So that's a transfer payment that happens way above my pay scale. And we've always been in a Manitoba housing building. So, so there is no payment for us that way. We pay, of course, our internet and phone bills and that type of thing, but the Manitoba housing takes care of this.
Oh, that's who does it, okay.
Yes, yeah. So that part is, has worked very well for us. There's changes coming down the road for us around block funding, happening in April, and a new lease agreement with Manitoba Housing, which we've had a glimpse at, which looks like there's an expectation that we'll take on more responsibility for the maintenance of the property. But without an increase in funding, I'm not sure where or how those things will happen and what exactly. Does that mean the painting inside? Does it mean plumbing? Those pieces are still kind of up in the air.
So you've done something lately, you say you've been around 35 years. I've been in the province 16, almost 17 years. And I only started to hear your name or notice you guys like this year.
Yes.
I don't know whether there's a difference in my social awareness or whether it's just different strategy.
I have a big mouth. You know what, like I said, in the last, I think probably it's, at this point, like I said, being in front of you folks and all the councils we've been in front of is a little bit in the situation that we're in dire straits at this point. I'm not sure what April's gonna look like. And, and I guess that's, I mean, other than the fact that it's been quite terrific, I will admit, coming out to meet with the different councils and, because most of the time, our audiences are women. So it's been great to be, having these conversations with men around the table because your questions are different. It's just been great.
I'm on for, like, I'm on for a pilot project for just a couple of years, just to see whether or not we can get more funding.
Yeah, well, and to see whether it's sustainable. So the board, our board took a bit of a risk and said, "We have a small, a small pot of money. If we were to invest in somebody that could generate more community development, generate some new events, will that raise and generate enough new resources to pay for itself and support the organisation more?" And so that's, that's where we're at with that.
And we are on social media now.
Yes, the social media piece is huge. And we had tried that years ago, but because we're not monitored, like, we're not monitoring it. If a person calls or sends me a message on Facebook Saturday night, there's nobody looking at that. So it's kind of the same as the texting. We don't have the resources to, to properly resource those things.
So your board members, are they, is that confidential too?
No, board members, we can tell you who those are. If they're actually on. Well, they're probably on the cover here, yeah, right on the top.
Right here.
Is there other?
On the back?
Yeah, right here.
Is there other organisations similar to yours in our province?
Yes.
So can you collectively try and do things together or?
We are part of an organisation, also a charity, called the Manitoba Association of Women's Shelters. And we have, we haven't briefed our new minister. We just got a change in minister. So we haven't sent her a brief. Our board has sent her a letter welcoming her to the portfolio and giving her a bit of information. But yeah, that's, it's a tough, because the shelters are all resourced about like we are. So even getting together twice a year, we have monthly conference calls, but the province, like right now, it's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. But even as far as having a coordinated effort around awareness through the province is not existent.
And also too, there are a few rural shelters, but a lot of them are, like, in the city. But rural looks very different than a city shelter. So there's, there's a few differences when, that we see that we have to.
Yeah, some of that is even just in the staffing. Like, we're one staff person on most of the time. So the issues that we're seeing are not any different than the issues that they would see though in the city, probably just not as often. But when I came back from my vacation in July, I think you, I sent you an email, I sent Ryan Hunt an email and Harry Bachelor, I read through the calls we'd had in July and I couldn't believe that over 50% of them had either meth or cocaine. At this point, marijuana and alcohol are sort of, you know, we can manage those things. But with the meth and the cocaine, we are in over our heads. And if a person phones, we know that these things are happening at the same time. So we know that, not always, but oftentimes, it can be that there is some other type of issue, a coexisting issue, together with the violence. So we are not necessarily the safest or best place for a person that's coming off of meth or even withdrawing from alcohol. We have kids in our place. It's, would kind of be like having this person in your home. Because that's what it is. It's a home for the other people with their children. So we're facing those same things. And not knowing where in our community to send these folks, where to refer them, if they, they need a safe place to be. But we need to be safe inside our place and we need to keep the people inside our place safe.
The people that are inside, is there a, a time limit that they can be in there?
The province would like to say 30 days. Moving to block funding, that what they've said is, you know, "We're not gonna pay you any more money. You can keep them as long as you want." So we are still motivated to help people make their moves as quickly as they can. That being said, I think we also know that housing is a significant issue, of finding safe and affordable housing, particularly for single people. So if you don't have a child tax credit to sort of offset your rental expenses every month, you're in trouble. There is just no place to, to be in our region. When the staff can pull a rabbit out of a hat for a single person, I'm always absolutely floored. Most of the time, in that case, they're left with, the person on assistance is left with about, well, under $100 for their needs for the month. So that would obviously preclude them from having a car. Most of the time, it would also mean they didn't have a phone.
The cost of living freeze, is that province-wide or is that just you?
None of us have seen any new money, like the shelters, for 12 years. I shouldn't say for, we got 1% when they increased the pension plan, which we don't have control over. So when the pension plan went up, the province gave us the 1% to offset the increase in pension. But it didn't help our bottom line. It just didn't put us any further in the hole. We know as well that we should be seeing more newcomers. We have our, yeah, our website is in a couple of languages. The reality though is if a person calls our crisis line, we will not be able to speak to them in those languages. There's one staff that can kind of muddle her way through high German and a bit of Russian, some Spanish, but not nearly, not nearly what we should have available.
And we have had people come up to us at like events. I was just at Superstore on Saturday or two weeks ago and said, "Do you have somebody who can speak my language?" And I'm trying to, trying to say what we do at the same time as she's, there's some issues around that as well. So we know it's, it's out there. And that's a whole different thing because the threats are a little bit different. Like, we'll send you back if you say that this is happening.
Yeah, I mean, very different, yes. They'll hold your passport. There's different things that we know about and that can be.
Bigger issue with that.
So you know, oops, how often do you have some of your victims' spouses show up at the door? Like, I realise you're very secure.
Yeah, that, you know, when I first came back to this, I took this job back as, as a manager. I had been in direct service for years. In 2005, we had a situation out front. But when we moved buildings, like our first building didn't have nearly the security that this one has. This one has cameras and you can see the cameras, you can see the bars in the window. I think most of the time, that is a deterrent to folks. And that time, when he came, I think he had a gun with him in the car. The Winkler police came immediately and that was it. And that's the last time I can remember something like that happening. Yeah, and when I worked in the first building, I can remember getting a woman in. She's got two kids in her arms, she's got two on the, they're holding on to her legs and we barely got her in the door and he was right behind her. And, you know, years later, years later, I mean, that woman came back to us again, like she, she went back to her partner. Years later, he did end up committing suicide. And those are the risks, right? When you're ready to kill yourself, you often don't care if you're taking somebody with you either, if that's the space that you're in. And so I always think about that family and think, what a huge risk she was at and that family was at by the time that happened. You had a question.
Yeah, well, you're, you're looking for support. So if we could form a letter and send it to the provincial government, that would be helpful.
It would be terrific.
Yeah, so that's something that we could do right away, probably if, you know, if council agrees. if council agrees. Um, the others, you're looking for financial?
Yes. Yes. Forty-three, thirty-four is what the numbers came out for for Morton.
And that's based on population?
That was based on your census. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. I am going to be working on a template letter actually, because one of the, one of the other community said, well, do you happen to have a template? And I'm like, oh, I guess that's all my list of jobs for today.
Well, we appreciate you guys allowing us to be here. This has been great. Our visits to all the different councils in this area have been really, um, educational for us as well. Um, if you guys at any point have any questions, uh, you can either email myself or Ange.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate your time.
Thank you for what you do.
Meeting.
Thank you for sure.
Thanks for coming in.
I'm gonna leave some of these posters, just in case you do know of anyone where you can put them. While I'm here, I'm just gonna drop that there.
I don't think it'd be good for the guys to be putting with the women's.
No, that's true.
Michelle, another job.
I can take care of that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you too.
All right.
Item number four.
Yeah.
It seems like a pretty common dread provincial funding, eh? Cause every, I'm not sure what phase everybody else is on, but sure too that I'm on, that's a huge issue because they haven't had funding increases for like 25 years. So, and costs, as we all know, go up. So who gets, who gets?
Yeah, it's got worse in the last five years. It's all there's, like we've seen more and more awful.
Yeah. So I mean, it, it's, it's hard for the organization because where do we get the funding from?
Well, it's not only provincial, like, uh, when Gordon's on Community Futures, same thing, they haven't had funding increase either, even from the federal side. So my only thinking on writing a letter is that we, wondering if, uh, whenever you put it on the agenda, we would consider, uh, supporting, uh, this at the AMM level. And, uh, you'd have to make a presentation at the, uh, at the regional meeting and then, uh, have the, the body of AMM support it.
Who's the minister now?
I don't know who the minister is, no.
Still, uh, the member from Tuxedo, I think.
But you see, when you get the whole province in, then it gets to the premier's desk, you know, low with, with some support. You write a letter, it kind of gets to the diplomat or the bureaucrats and then, you know, can die. So you kind of want it to get to government.
I know they were in that, that was in Count Friesen's office.
Yeah. You know, I don't know, but, you know, it's easy to find out. The staff can find out who the minister is. But, I mean, writing a, the letter is one thing, but I think, again, I just want to, you're ready, uh, it just, if we, if we go in with, uh, the AMM lobby on behalf of municipalities, cause it is probably a social concern with regards to all jurisdictions. So.
We could do both, come out in both.
Whatever you want.
I think it's Heather Stevenson. Or Stephenson. Minister of Family.
Yeah, I mean, and you, I mean, can individually write the letter too, if you wanted to, but it's just, I'm just thinking, just to get a, a better punch to the thing.
Yeah, AMM would be good.
Whatever.
Previous justice minister.
Is it justice?
She was the previous justice minister.
Yeah. I think she moved over to families. This is Michelle Squire's name. They all, they all changed. I want to do change Kelvin Cameron. Ministers Gertsen and Friesen to me. All right. Uh, agenda four is corporate, return over to Hank, Council Hillbrand.
Okay. At nine thirty-six a.m. for the record, in case I get accused of dragging it all too long. Has happened in the past, not recently, but, um, okay, financial report. Um, and, uh, I guess very first thing is, does anybody have any questions regarding to financial report before we ask Patrick for his comments?
Some of the questions were answered. Thank you for that. Do you have them numbered there?
So I got through some of them and all open.
Yeah. Yeah. It's just, uh, just, I'm just curious though. I would just give us some checking on the budget that we approved, like the financial plan we approved in April of last year or this year. Some of the budget numbers don't, don't match to the numbers on here. Do you know why that would be or?
Depends. I would have to know which ones and then kind of look, but.
Well, an example, I guess it'd be property taxes doesn't, it was out by, I can't remember how much, but.
Like the first, the big line?
Yeah. Yeah. There, there's actually, there's a few.
You mean it's 15 million, one thirty-two, seven eighty-three doesn't align to the number on the budget?
Part of that was probably the, um, annexation properties?
Um, I don't know. Because, uh, the budget says 15 million, one forty-five, nine forty-one.
No, and this is actually down?
Yeah. But there's, there's a whole bunch of those numbers all over the place that aren't, aren't the same. So I, I'm just curious. I'm just curious.
So for that, that real property line, for example, that would be kind of the download that we got from the province number. And then added to that is a bunch of adjustments. And most of these are, um, due to those annexation lands, we give out a credit basically.
Right.
So all those people in that, living in that RM area that, um, qualify under that arm of annexation agreement, they receive a credit to bring their property taxes back to what they would have been under the RM. So the other side of that, reducing the, the receivable from them hits this account as well as to reduce that overall income amount. So that's the discrepancy there, I would think. You can see all the individual rule numbers.
So you're saying that when we determine the budget number for tax, property taxes, like, uh, in our financial plan, we don't have the detail then from the government with regards to the assessment and also the rollbacks?
The, the annexation agreement is, I guess, separate from what the, what the actual role numbers.
So when we do the financial plan, we're going to come up with taxes based on, on the assessment and then the mill rate. That becomes our, the number that we look at when we determine our budget for, for, for the year. But when in actual fact, it'll be less than that. So, but the budget number should always remain static, right? To what we determine it should be when we do the financial plan. It just, the variance would be, the actuals would vary, not the, uh, budget number. Right? So the budget should always be constant, right?
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
So, so.
Yeah, just, yeah, yeah. It just, let's say if you look at total revenue, just as an example, like total revenue on the budget is over one and a half million dollars out from what the budget on the financial statement says. That's why. I was just, I was just curious about that.
Well, that's what it would be, is it's being adjusted according to those numbers.
Not 1.5 million.
No?
No.
But no, that'd be, the number came from somewhere though.
No, I'm just like, like this is the one we approved, right?
Yep.
This is the one we approved, right? So I was just comparing some.
Well, no, they say those numbers that we approved should show up on the, on the budget.
And they should balance there, yeah.
And then the variance is the issue that we deal with.
Yeah, but they, they don't balance on this, on the budget line either. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. No, I hear you. Yeah.
And that's why the variances are a whack, so.
Could be because of the, the, not all the budget lines were entered yet. Like I had gotten to all the operating, but not the capital yet. So that may be the reason, if you're looking at those accounts maybe.
Maybe something we want to look at.
Just a question.
Well, you want an answer though? Yeah, it's a question, so.
Well, I mean, you know, he can check it out, I guess.
Yeah.
Get back to us.
If you can maybe take the, as a takeaway, Patrick on that one. Find out why it doesn't align to the, uh, financial plan.
Sorry, the, the property taxes specifically, that account?
A total income. Income is, he said.
There's a few values. I can email you that. That's fine.
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, anybody, any other questions, Gary, or others? We have to note, I mean, we have to pay, note that, or note that the, uh, the Morton Beach came in over budget and we actually, if you, if you netted it out from the expenses versus the income, we're actually in, in the black.
Which is, that's a good sign.
That's a good sign. Yeah.
Yeah.
Now I'd like you to tell me that the food services, the access event center is the same.
So you'd ask that question? So I think.
Well, you can get back to us on it if you want.
I've got it up here if you want to see a breakdown.
Sure.
Sorry, that's the wrong one. So you had the, so you see the, the food services expense line was eighty?
Eighty-eight, five eighty-seven.
Okay. Here are, um, this three, five, eight is kind of all of the services kind of coming out of the access event center. They're all rolled up into one. But if we're looking at food services, you see the catering here, concession will be included and bar revenue. So those three added together are about at seventy-three thousand, let's say.
Of revenue.
Of revenue. So the, the revenue is always a little bit behind the expenses because the expenses get paid out of here. The revenues are collected there and then deposited through those accounts like we've talked about before. So that might be a month behind. So the reason these might be a little bit lower than the expenses is for that reason.
For that one.
The month of October probably isn't entered yet for revenue side.
Okay. So again, I just want to, uh, just the way that I look at, at those numbers, again, uh, from what I've done in the past many years in Hudson Lending, is the expenses are roughly, like food expenses are about a third of the cost of the, um, uh, of the meals, okay, of what the income should be. So if you have, as an example, a $10 meal, the food cost would be thirty-three, three dollars and thirty-three cents. Then the labor costs and, and some of the sundry is the other three dollars thirty-three. And then the other three dollars would be to pay for the facilities and.
Here you can kind of see a little bit of breakdown of that expense number. So you have your eighty thousand there. Um, this is your wages expense, which is the largest. And here's your catering supplies.
So that, which those two are similar.
Why are we, why are we, uh, having, uh, aligned for concession supplies when we don't run concessions? Oh, that's vending machines.
Vending, yeah.
Okay. Okay, good.
Yeah, just a title, I guess. So you can see that it's close to that third, 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 okay?
Yeah.
So it's the other third that, because the concern is that should cover off the fact that we've got a quarter million dollar kitchen per se, okay?
And so our, I think it was 120,000 budget of, of food services and revenues that we had budgeted. So we're not there yet overall. So we haven't hit that Christmas season.
That's true. Yeah.
And the fall events.
Yeah. So.
There's more to come probably.
Okay, good. Well, we'll keep an eye on it for, every year and so.
I just have something, it's not, it's not much, but the trailer park rentals, like three ninety-nine there?
Yes, they come in.
Yeah, the income there. They, you would think that if anything, it should be what the budget is, if not higher, right? Cause for the most part, trailer rentals probably shouldn't be going down, right?
Going down. So they wouldn't, they pay on them on a quarterly basis, some are a monthly basis? Or how are you saying that? It's just the.
Well, it's just, like the budgeted amount is 128 and we've got 111 so far. So I'm just wondering, like for the most part, uh, trailers are.
They pay monthly?
Moved in sort of thing, not.
Quarterly, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, usually quarterly, yeah.
So.
So we may not, we haven't collected all the payments for the year yet.
Okay.
So eighty percent of the year is done. So if you look at the right-hand line, if you're around that eighty percenting, you know that, yeah, there's twenty left to come. In that case, it's thirteen left to come. So. And some it's over. I mean, and some trailers, like if you look at, uh, ones on South Railway, some are not occupied right now.
No.
You know, like they're, they're vacant and some are pulled out of there and they haven't been replaced. So.
Even if they're not occupied, they still have to pay.
They pay, they pay?
They have to pay.
Even if they all move away?
It's.
The park itself, the park itself.
The owner of the park who has to pay.
Has to pay, okay.
Cause basically, the, the fee is basically an in lieu of, um, the building on assessment.
Yeah.
Because they're paying land only basically. So this kind of tops it up to, to include the buildings of the.
So, and then you got the budget variance. So thank you for doing that. And then if you have any other comments at all, Patrick, we welcome that.
Um, I think that's most of it. I, I kind of, the variance analysis, I picked out the major ones that I thought might not make sense.
Yeah.
Uh, a lot of them are just, it's not the end of the year yet and there's some general entries that may have to be made. And there's some checks that will still be written within the year, but.
Okay.
Your note number fourteen on item three twelve, or line three twelve, you know, you know what, we're, I mean, budgeted twenty-four high and it's in at eighty-six-two. Do you know what that is?
Which one is that?
Uh, line three twelve.
So explanation fourteen?
Sewer collection system costs, other.
Yeah, those are, so water main break costs during the year. There was quite a few in the beginning of the year. So that number's been kind of high, like right from the beginning of the year.
Okay, that's what I thought it was, by the way.
So that may just be like a coding thing, cause that would, that, that probably be a transmission distribution code, right? Or if it's water breaks, it's just like coding, maybe a coding thing. It's, it's under sewer collection. That, that's maybe why the question came up, right? Or?
Yeah.
I don't know. If it's water breaks, right? Wouldn't it go under water distribution and transmission?
Depends, I guess, on how they've coded it.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's been done consistently, I guess, from when it used to be done, as far as I know, but.
It's still, it would put both, both over, whether it was other.
Yeah, either or.
Can we get Tim to cut down on the number of water breaks?
It may require revising a line online.
Looks like they've started again.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, there's a couple more.
Do you have Mother Nature's email address?
It's getting cold and we get a little smoke. They're going to get a lot worse.
I think these are kind of, it's important to remember too, these are kind of the excavation costs and the immediate, like fix it now kind of expenses. Often the, the fixing expenses of, whether it be we had to tear up someone's driveway or sidewalk or whatever, those are gonna, those are gonna come in probably next year, whenever, whenever those jobs get fixed, I guess.
So item three twelve then, I think, if this is the fourth year in a row, I believe that this one has been significantly over the budget. So we might want to look at increasing that budget. Just be practical about it.
Can do that when you look at budgeting. Did Patrick, did you have anything else? I, sorry, I skipped over. It said deputy city manager report, uh, corporate first and then the financial. So.
I didn't have a written report this time, but just kind of what I've been working on lately, GST auditor's been in last week, will be in this week again. So they're kind of keeping me busy. Um, John Blatts, we have a new hire for the, the, my assistant there, the finance officer. So that's exciting.
Yeah.
He'll be starting twentieth, which is next week.
Yep.
So that'll be good. Um, 2017 financial audit, uh, they are working on the financial statement. So that's a good sign. I've been kind of helping with some of the schedules and stuff as they request. Uh, just got another request on, I think Thursday or Friday, which I haven't addressed yet on one of the schedules. So it's just a back and forth to help them reconcile. So that'll be my priority whenever I get out today and this week.
So is it fair to say then on November twentieth and twenty-first, that somebody will be working on bank recs in, in 2018?
Maybe not right away.
Not right away? Oh.
Let's, we'll teach them the system first and how everything works. But, yeah, it shouldn't be too shortly, far after that. That'll be one of the first.
High priority.
Yeah.
Okay. Cause along with that comes 2019 fairly quickly. So.
That is true.
Anything else you want to report to council?
That is it.
Any council have any questions? Patrick? Anybody? Gary?
I'll email.
You'll email? Okay. Uh, community service and event, oh, that's, by the way, the financial statement, uh, it's not, uh, there's no motion required on that one. It's for information only. Um, and, uh, it doesn't come to council. So that's the only time it goes to council once we get the audited statement, right? Okay, community services, uh, report. Um, who wants to speak to that? Patrick, do you want to, any recap on that one or is it for our information?
Uh, just for information.
Does anybody have any, you've all read it or had access to it? Does anybody have any questions or comment?
I, I think we just have to acknowledge the amount of, uh, work that, that Claire and her team is, has put into this U-18 championship.
Okay.
And how, uh, uh, how it was received by, uh, probably all the teams here and also the, uh, the hockey candidate themselves and the amount of, um, of recognition that, that the community gets, our region, uh, gets for hosting something like this. So just kudos to Claire and her.
Do you know the percentage of volunteers that were from the various communities? Like how many?
From what I heard, it was, uh, I do sort of, but I don't know if I, you know, maybe it's.
Do you know how many volunteers there were?
Total?
Yeah.
Uh, not exactly, but I, I heard seventy-five, twenty-five.
Oh, okay. So around a hundred volunteers?
No, no.
Oh, seventy-five, twenty-five is the, the percentage.
But that could be.
No, I heard that too.
Yeah. So I don't want to go on record as to.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'd just add to that, I also talked to one of the volunteers in Winkler at the last game there. And that volunteer was actually from Morton. But what he heard there was that, uh, I know there was two co-chairs for this thing, but Claire was obviously definitely by far the most, did the most work towards this thing.
Seventy-five, twenty-five?
Probably. Probably, probably. So she deserves a lot of credit, for sure. As do all the volunteers, for sure.
It's good, it was good for the community, yeah. I'm sure the motels and food outlets and the gas stations and stores in the area.
Well, ticket sales exceeded their, their projections by thirty percent.
By how many?
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent, wow.
That's awesome.
That's real good.
Perfect.
Good time.
Yeah.
Team Alberta had a player with the last name Morden.
Awesome.
Yeah. So I've kind of, well, games in Winkler, saw a lot of people from Morden volunteering, and that's good.
Good deal. Well, yeah, thank you, and we'll move to, you're done with that? Anybody else have any comments regarding the Community Services and Events Report? Not them, we'll move to subdivision four point four, forty-four, thirty-three dash nineteen dash seven eight eight six, and I'll bet you Martin's got a comment.
Oh, really?
What?
They, this is back in September, this is Fine Blade Carpentry, they're building the three phases in Ninth Street South.
Yeah.
So it's condo plant, they need provincial approval, obviously. So here we are again with wastewater treatment. So at that time, both province and us, we had a condition that the subdivision not go to final certificate of approval until that situation is resolved. Turns out, the lawyer acting on behalf of the developer has cut a deal with sustainable development, allows them to convey Phase One separate from the other two phases, provided that occupancy isn't granted for Phase Two, Phase Three. So I'm thinking, we gotta learn some lessons from that lawyer, for the entire city, but.
Well, it's also not much of a water usage facility either, is it?
Right. I mean, if they just kept building, there's no issue.
Yeah.
It's just their ability to convey is constrained by our having a municipal condition on this. So the request from the lawyer and the developer can, will council remove its condition of approval that starts with, let's see if I can find this.
It's a removal, they can, I read it someplace in here.
We approved it subject to, with the condition that the concerns regarding the wastewater treatment lagoon be rectified prior to the commencement of work on the subdivision. Sustainable development has advised the lawyer that that's not necessary based on this deal. And in any event, us having that, that condition is redundant, because the province will look after that on our behalf, on behalf of the developer.
Okay, so.
I'll, I'll move that.
Gary moves?
Yeah.
Do we need a mover in here, or just we're moving to take it to council, to recommend this to council, right? So this will come forward to council then for recommendation?
Yep.
Right? Okay, thank you. And then this, and then we'll go to four point five, and that is community signs. And that is, I think it came as a result of the library wishing to have their symbol on the community signage on the east and west entrance of Morden.
Yes.
And I've only lived here for all my life, and I, is that, where is that sign?
It's one of the channels.
Golf, golf.
Golf thing, okay. This one here. They're gonna take, then they're taking police off of there, and they're gonna put library there? Why is police in the green?
No, that's just, I'm not sure what's.
I was looking at it, and I was just wondering, we've got three things for the beach up there, or four, actually, that bottom row in between the police, each side. Can we not condense that?
You'd think so.
And put the library up there? Is there a way of doing that?
Because we are asking to replace fishing and the field sign.
Well, there's boating, there's swimming, and there's tent.
Fishing and fuel, and then replace them with library and airport.
But the fishing, speaking of fishermen, we have one of the best three lakes in North America here.
Really?
Yeah. Colored Lake is, it's always us and Mary Jane Reservoir, they're tied for master anglers.
Okay, so the recommendation is that we're gonna ask for the fuel and the fishing to be replaced by the airplane and the library.
Well, we take the boat off, since we want boats off the lake anyway.
We already have an airplane. Like, our regional airport, if you go further up the highway, there is an airplane there. And it says Regional Airport. They're talking all in one sign, though.
Yeah.
You know, I, okay, but I'm just, we have it there to take up space here.
This airport one's been a, a sort of a request by all the communities, because they all said, like, whether it's Winkler, or Altona, or Manchu, they all had their signs, but nobody has a sign that says they have a library within the community, right? So they've been very adamant about that.
Well, isn't it safe to assume we have a police department?
Well, my understanding of the Winkler didn't even have police on their sign. There, right here.
Winkler's is further down, let's see.
They don't have police. They don't have police. They don't have police. I mean, the sign. It's on page thirty-eight.
Yeah.
There.
No, they don't have police.
Surely.
But what's the middle one on top?
Hockey.
Fairground.
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 Curling soccer.
May staff ask a question of committee?
Yes.
What is the M in the Temple Lake structure?
Museum.
Museum.
Oh. Did anybody know that without looking?
Yeah, I guess.
I'm sorry, I, you know what, I don't, to me, this is a minor.
I thought it would have been like a town.
So anyway, are we recommending this as to council? Is everybody okay with this, with management's recommendation?
I think we should.
Okay.
Well, I just wonder if we're taking the fishing sign off on one of the three best black crappie lakes in the world.
Yeah.
Whether that's, we're, hunting fishing's gonna give it to us.
Change the, change the boat, take the boat off.
Because if you're swimming, there'd also be boating.
If we're, if we're trying to limit the boats someday.
Because people come here from.
Who came up with that recommendation? Was that management?
Yes.
Administration? Okay. Are you, is administration okay with leaving the fishing, taking out the boat? Or do you want to take it back to committee?
I'm just planning down by the kids.
Are you, are you serious or not?
Why, I'm serious.
I'm serious.
It is.
Are we going to ban boats in the future?
I don't.
Well, who knows? Who, who knows with, with the.
Granted, it gives the lake a rest for fishing for.
Hope you're not gonna say with the, with Jim's. Because he won't touch it.
No, with the, the mussels, that's what I'm trying.
Zebra mussels.
The zebra mussels, yeah. There was just a thing not that long ago about them again, someplace else, I don't know, I think that's a serious issue.
Because when that lake study, the province basically recommended banning boats on there, but they won't, they want the city to be the ones.
To do it.
Yeah, there's no scientific reason to do it. So you guys gotta come up with a reason.
If, if the boat goes off of there.
But we may give boat, but not motor boats.
Or under a certain horsepower. The, the recommendation for the province, Ocean's.
Yeah, this recreation.
They had a report, it's in my folder, they said that high-powered boats were destroying the spawning grounds for both the walleye and the black crappie.
In Morden Lake?
Yeah.
That was the reason the back end was roped off to keep the boats out of there, so the spawning could happen.
Yeah.
That was under the direction of game and fish.
Yeah. So the black crappie, the, the good spawning bed for the black crappie is at the south end of the lake, adjacent to the parts we just purchased, which is why it's really good, we're getting, because all the chemicals off that, that fifty-six acres of poppy there, or spraying into the trees, it's running in. But that part there is getting heavily washed, and it's, it's a pretty important spot.
It's interesting, we don't have curling on either, on ours either. And they do, and like, we should, I, I would think, like, Winkler and Morden would offer about same services, should have probably about same, except that we have a lake and they don't have a lake, so.
Because we also have hiking, we have Great Hiking Lake. You gotta pick, you're ten.
I guess you don't want to put so many signs on that.
Canoeing is M thirty.
Do you want to do just private amenities, or public amenities, since the city offers, or, does it's a safe to assume we also have restaurants?
You have to keep three out of fuel, food, and accommodations.
Okay.
Two, two out of the three you have to keep, for sure. So if you're taking fuel off, to put library.
What's M forty-five, what's that part of the thing? We have water?
Those are water towers.
And with forty-five.
Yeah, to, to me, this isn't a major decision thing, so whatever you people want. I wouldn't want to spend too much time on this thing. What's a wishes?
I think the library.
Management there.
I think the library should be on there.
You want library on there?
Yeah.
Okay, so are you okay with the rest, the way man, administration has recommended, for now?
Or do you just want to replace the library symbol for now?
Not terrible.
Well, I'm fine, I mean, you know.
We're kind of wanting to promote the airport, aren't we?
Yeah.
We are. There's a separate sign on the highway, like we're noticing.
Yeah.
But until there's airport amenities, you can't just drive your plane in right now, say, like, show up and get a charter.
You want to remove gas to put up.
Library.
Library?
It's pretty obvious you're driving to town, there's a gas station.
Yeah.
Food, yeah, food. You know, and I leave it up, in my personal apartments, I leave it up to administration.
I, I quite frankly, don't care if fewer people fish the lake either.
So can we, can we move this thing forward?
Go ahead.
It's kind of getting stalled.
Yep.
Can we go along with administration?
Yeah.
Okay. Bring it forward, recommendation? Thank you. Notice of motion, resolution, remember and stay poppies. Do we okay with this resolution, huh? Is everybody okay with this resolution? So we have remote municipalities being, being the prime point of contact to, it being the school divisions, yeah?
That's not been confirmed with Bob Frost yet, he was away, so I haven't been able to sit down with him.
Okay.
But you can't even revisit that resolution until somebody puts in a notice of motion. That's what this is on the agenda today.
I spoke with Bob at the Durham State Supper on the tenth, and he was saying they wanted, trying to get filled for what they did want. He was saying they wanted it to be a central contact at the province that would insist on a uniform standard to the school boards. So that takes it kind of out of, from my understanding, what they want, they, they're not asking us to ask all school divisions, they're wanting the province to provide a central contact who will ensure enforcement, or, or ensure that even application applies to all school boards.
So I'm, so I'm slightly confused with that statement, then. It is, is that, be it, therefore be it resolved, is that adequate, then, with the, with the red circled out of there?
This, what you received, that's internal notes, because I haven't spoken to Bob Frost to confirm.
Yeah, I know, but for us to recommend, like, you're looking for council's recommendation on this, are you?
Today?
Yeah.
Today.
This is information only?
This isn't.
Today, I only am giving you information that somebody needs to put forth a notice of motion to reconsider the resolution at your December council meeting. Somebody needs to put forth a notice of motion, I have, we need a request in writing for the November eighteenth council meeting from someone that we need to reconsider the motion, because you've already defeated the resolution at the past council meeting.
Oh, okay. So you're.
So to reconsider it, somebody needs to put forth a notice of motion.
So you're looking at the legion to, or one of the councillors?
One of the councillors needs to put forth a notice of motion to reconsider the resolution at the future council.
So will we bring it to council meeting on November eighteenth?
Correct.
Yeah. You see, if I were to write the resolution based on what he mentioned to me, it would say that we lobby the province to appoint a central contact for the school boards. And that would be a provincial job.
Is that adequate for Mayor Burley to, to present that?
I'll send it in, yeah.
Well, if. So as I put, we need the request for the notice of motion in writing for November eighteenth, and then that resolution would be on your agenda for the November eighteenth council meeting. So today, I'm just giving you information that somebody needs to request this notice.
To let you know.
Yes.
And then it will be brought up for December's meeting.
Correct.
Oh, okay. Would you take that on, Mayor Burton?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, thank you. That's all we need, then, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Then the next is proposed subdivision, and Martin, you have comment, or you?
This one I do.
You do, okay.
Yeah. RM of Stanley, has a new planning assistant.
Yeah.
And we should acknowledge that she's doing a great job, because we've missed this in the past. There's a fellow hoping to establish a farm implement welding operation on a four, or no, an eight-acre portion of property right at Road Thirty-two West, so.
Which one is, thirty-one, thirty-two?
Thirty-two, so that's a mile west of our post-annexation boundaries.
Okay.
So within that area, the MSTW Planning District Development Plan requires a motion of support from the adjacent city, because this is located within the collaborative planning area, and that motion is not to be unreasonably withheld. So our recommendation is staff, after confirming, obviously, do we have an existing service-sharing agreement, tax-sharing agreement? If so, is this consistent with it? If not, do we need it? This is kind of benign from our perspective. It's a site that's been used for, and may continue to be used for aggregate resource extraction. No biggie. But we would need a motion at council meeting of support to that effect.
Does anybody have any questions of Martin on this thing? I don't, we, we don't have tax-sharing agreement, and we.
Are they getting into our services, water, sewer, no?
Okay. No, they would be, I would expect if they need water in support of this operation, they do, they drill for it in terms of their septic, that, it depends, this is a medium-quality aggregate extraction area, so they, it's spotty where you can locate your septic. But if they can't find something suitable, they'll either abandon, or they'll have to do it by, you know, tank system exclusively. Yeah, and in that respect, councillor, that's, you know, there's, there's no effect on us.
I don't have a map here, but.
I've got something that's, you know, as good as I can do. This is, you can just see at the right side of that, I've only got three of you, so you get.
Okay, we, I can share it, Gary.
It's right across the highway. You can see the, the drive-through, just in the far right-hand corner.
It's right across from all these acres.
So yeah, it's that sort of pinkish shaded area.
Excavated gravel pit.
Yeah. So they're taking a little tiny piece of that, an acre piece of that.
Say it again, Mark.
They're taking a little itty-bitty piece, what's eight acres, actually, out of that broader hole.
That's genus?
No.
No, because here's pipeline.
Genus is here. This is, it's where you're saying.
Yeah, this is Howard, right here.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it's across the.
Yeah, I got it.
This is of the province's land use mapping system, which is actually pretty good, because it's that far out the side of our city boundaries. It's part of our.
Okay, all right. So you've all had a chance to look at it, anybody have any opposition or questions? Okay, do you want to come forward to council meeting? That would be four point seven, and then move it over to operations at ten eleven.
Well, this will be quick. Starting with, I'd just like to say, Buffalo Works did an excellent job during that storm. All the city services were just unreal, considering what we're up against. One question they do have, the case like that, say a nine-nine-one-one call comes in, is there something set up to have a plow or one of our machines go in front of it?
Yeah, we had contact with Bushley, and he came along with the loader, until all the incidents happened where we had three, three nine-one-one calls, ambulance assisted, because we couldn't get close to the resident, so we assisted with getting the resident to the road, and then we got the road cleared, so the ambulance could then, could move.
I thought, yeah, I thought. He pulled us out a couple times.
Yeah. And I, and I pulled him out once, and that's where I stopped. Then I was pulled back to the fire hall with a quad.
Thanks, Mark.
See you, guys.
Yeah.
See you, Mark.
Okay, the other one, they're just five, two, three, four, and five are all reports for your information. Want, does anybody got any questions?
I just have one. Just one concern, and maybe towards Fazel, that the public works gets a little quicker response to sanding. The streets are very. The streets are very greasy on Saturday, and they got to them Sunday.
That's what, like, I'm going to meet with Jason today, Public Works supervisor, and then ask him about the standard process. Where and what level of service we provide, and if it's kind of like increasing level of service, then it will come with certain costs, and we may add it into the budget then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, could you also add on his list if we could be considered to be cleared out fairly quickly too? Just to get in and out, we were even getting stuff over there, and I know that's an unusual situation, the storm that we had.
Right.
But a lot of times our, our portion back here and in front waits for a long time before we ever get cleared out, so.
Sure.
Also me.
Also you.
I feel like that woman that called was in the middle of Morden, said her water broke. Could anybody pick her up instead of calling 911?
Wow.
Yeah.
I had an email.
It was all.
Within 24 hours of the snowstorm, I had a Facebook message from a lady who told me it was a disgrace because hers, her, uh, her windrow hadn't cleared up yet.
Call a better one. There was when somebody complained about the parking lot at the dog park, probably had cleared up.
Oh, yeah, nobody else was.
The only question I have with regards to windrows, if I can, is people on Mountain, they don't get their windrows cleared, eh? Because Department of Highways clears their, the, the road. So there's people living along there that say, well, I'm paying taxes just like everybody else does in Morden. How come I won't get my, um, the, the approach cleaned up in my driveway? Is that something we can look at, or is that?
Because they get taxed the same.
They're taxed the same as everybody else in Morden.
Where was that again?
On Mountain. There's quite a few residential south of, of the tracks.
Being the same authority all that.
Yeah, it would be, yeah.
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 While we're on-
There's not very many along Front Hill. But it would be the same.
While we're on utilities, do you know if we have any buyback plots left at the, at Hillside?
Buyback plots?
Yeah, like, like anybody we can buy plots back from?
Potentially, like, there's, are you asking, are there lots of empty ones?
Yeah.
There are, some of them go back 100 years or more.
Okay.
So even who holds them or who owns them is, is difficult to pursue. I know, maybe in 2017, Dar sent out some letters, and we were able to buy back a couple here and there, just because she knew that they were empty and were not going to be used. But, yeah.
It would be difficult to do that.
It would be difficult.
Okay.
Unless someone comes forward.
Okay.
Which, which happened in one of those scenarios there.
You can't, there's no way to sound her down to find out if there's, if these plots are empty, right?
Well, like I said, it could be 100 years ago, often the empty ones are in the older section of the cemetery. So if a family has purchased like a large, the whole block, let's say. Yeah, and now it's, they had four kids, each of those four kids technically has a right to those plots, the unused ones. If they don't use them because they've moved off and whatever, and they have kids, they were at that point already. So how to get down that line on who actually has right or title or, or wants them?
That reminds me, you had contacted Jewish.
Yes.
On whatever the group is called.
They need to get back to me.
They still have to get back to you?
Nope, they will.
Oh, they will?
I'll check.
Because there is quite a chunk that is not being used by the Jewish cemetery, so.
They do have access to finding out if there's a coffin down in a spot. Joey Greenery was telling me they have a rod that they push down, because the other day they were going into a spot and they actually came upon a coffin down there.
Oh?
Yeah, they thought it was clear, but it wasn't.
Unmarked plot.
Unmarked plot, yeah, they had to move over a bit or something to that effect. Joey, Joey's got the history of it. Joey Greenery.
I just have one, one, any word from KTI at all on their wireless?
We've started the process, but I haven't heard anything from them yet, because we, uh, sent them over 20 to get all those permits. So I believe permits haven't been closed yet, so.
It's been like a year, so here, I started wondering, we're, we spent a lot, many, many, many thousands of dollars on meters that are going to have to be taken out right away.
Did we ever explore the idea of maybe just buying out that contract? Or paying a portion of it, not having to pay the installation? And never receiving, because, because there's no benefit to the new meter over the old one.
Never explored that.
Unless we're doing 5G, because I'm thinking it's 1.00 million, what if we said we're, we won't take, we won't take product, but we'll pay X dollars? And we'd still save, maybe still save a million dollars.
I think the product is the major component of that project. If we take it out, then the project is just a couple hundred thousand dollars.
That was considered, wasn't it, and we, it would have been cost prohibitive, like, you would have been, you may as well.
So what, uh, the, the company that, that has them, is there, like, I'm just talking here now, the expectations that they have of, of how much money they make on this? Is it 40%, 50%? Like, what is the, what would be?
I don't know, but the other thing was that, like, they, we consider, like, previous administration and council consider that too. Like, the replacement of meters will be cheaper than what we are doing right now, because the meters will be less expensive as compared to what meters we are using right now.
Don't quote me, but somehow I remember close to half the price.
The radio reads are more than, than what we're-
What we are going to. And that's, we were looking at in the longer run, that it will be, uh, less expensive for us to replace meters in the longer run, if needed.
What they originally presented to us was that the additional revenue that we're going to get as a result of replacing the meters is going to, it'll pay for itself.
The additional revenue from-
The additional, the water that you're not getting paid for now. That we're treating and that we're not getting paid for.
From, and it could be, there's a few different streams that fire colorate, so the, the meters now, the current meters have like a dial that spins. Over time, it slows down. So over time, you're consistently losing revenue, the older the meter gets. The new ones have more of like, I think it's an infrared system that measures water as it goes by, which doesn't wear out. So that's one part, the other part was identifying, um, identifying leaks instantaneously. So if, like, there's a water main break that goes unnoticed, this, if you have the meters in the right spot, like, let's say at Hydrance, and I can't, I don't know all the technicals, but, um, you can identify that the water was sooner as well.
So the installation, these are, are easier, like with the new ones?
Should be the same, like, it's, because it's, it occupies the same space as the old one would, about the same size, it's, it's still the two connections that flow through.
Yeah, my, why is it taking as long as it is? Is it, is that, is KTI's issue?
It's both sides.
Both sides?
Because we didn't have enough resources, because we're working on straightening up our books, and we don't have WCD major operations.
Right.
And now, like, uh, they're working on permits, so that's from them right now.
Okay.
So once they got all those permits, they'll let us know, and that will start working.
Okay, that, what I'm not clear on now is how are we going to collect the readings? We still have to, they're going to, somebody can read it from the street, like, we won't have-
We will get it from the office, because they're going to install antenna on top of one of our towers.
Yeah.
And then we'll get readings, uh, like, real-time readings from them.
So you can, you can isolate one meter, like, if someone calls in with a problem, we can look at that history and, and isolate, we can just, a random test on any meter we want to. It's, it's basically an instantaneous thing.
So what I understood was that even, say I'm gone for a month, and, and, well, there's water usage in my house. Well, they'll be able to detect that a toilet's leaking water or a sink or something.
And it, yeah, potentially.
Well, that's the way it was presented.
Owner can do that, but you may do that.
Except the owner's not home.
Yep.
No, the technology goes even further, if we set it up correctly, each user, and there, there's a little bit more background to it, like, we'd have to attach to our website, let's say, or somehow integrate that. But if we get to that point, the homeowner can actually log in themselves and see their history, real time and, and historical data. So that if they see all of a sudden there's a spike in usage, well, okay, it happened on this day or whatever.
And they'll say to you, "Portage put it in," and they were very, very pleased with it.
That's what I've heard as well.
So, and that's when, that was, that's when we initially made the decision to, to move in that direction, so. If this council wants to negate it, I mean, that's-
It would also eliminate the, um, the, the meter readers.
Yeah.
That have to go out, which we've been having troubles finding and getting people to stay in.
Yeah. And they're nuisance for people to walk in the house, so. They don't take shoes off, and they just keep their shoes on and walk right through.
Uh, they'll take them off if you ask them to. They, there's nobody going to go in your house with their shoes on if you say, "What, what are you doing?" Is there?
I don't know, I just noticed when the, the last time, the guy, person just came in, walked down the stairs.
But you-
Well, I didn't look at the feet to say, "Oh, would you mind taking your shoes off?"
Yeah.
I'm just going by my experience, so whatever, I don't know.
There would be, yeah, there wouldn't be a whole lot of those anymore over there. They come in, they're like, the, the old ones, shouldn't be too many of the old ones, I think. Some of, there shouldn't be too many of the old meters left.
My house is 20 years old, and it has.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Mine does.
Mine does too.
Mine does too.
Really? So it's quite a few then? I didn't know how many there was, but.
I asked for a reading read, but they, it was going on a-
Right.
As needed basis sort of thing, but I was still-
I don't know, I'm just telling you on my eyes.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know what that.
Anyway.
That's it? More questions? Or we can put you in the hall?
All right, 6.1, it is 10:24. City manager report, 6.1.
Yeah, let's give it.
So, uh, we'd like to touch on two things. One, uh, the massive snowstorm happened during the Thanksgiving weekend. So Public Works and park staff, along with contractors, have done a really good job, um, to clear snow throughout the storm period and clean up the tree branches even a couple of weeks after the storm. And I've heard that they've done, like, they finished last week with all those branches. And second thing is 2019 National Women's Under-18 Hockey Championships. So this is community services and events, as well as facilities staff, along with volunteers, have done a great job to make that event successful.
We don't have your report, do we?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the second, it's on the second one.
Oh, it's on side, that's right, I'm on the wrong one here, okay, got it.
On item four.
apologize for that.
So I'm guessing that that little storm maybe put a bit of a hit on our snow budget?
Uh, yes, definitely, but we are looking at if any funding available from the province, so we may jump into it and try to get them. Because they declared this state of emergency, so.
Well, sorry, then I asked my question out of line before about Mountain Street approaches. I thought you were at your, your report at that time.
Yeah, we've applied for that emergency assistance, right? But we-
No, we haven't, because there isn't any assistance program at this point in time, but I believe we, um, passed a resolution.
Right.
So if any program will come in, then we will jump into it.
Uh, item four, Morden, it's being shut down. I got information that I verified that some residential radios are still operational. I'll pass that to you.
Sure, I'll check. So they are getting internet service?
They're still getting the access, Morden, yeah.
Your little blurb on Facebook there was pretty good.
Yeah, see, I, my, when, when people accuse me of, of ethics violations, saying I did send something in an email that they will not release publicly. That, the, the fellow who I responded to was the guy who sent me, uh, a series of emails that whole day, mainly four-letter words and things like this. But, you know, it, it affect, it's me, not the city, so that I respond to it saying, if, if you have something that you're claiming is an ethics violation, bring it out. I, I mean, if you want to go to HERSMPV, my guest, I got nothing to hide. So, yeah, to speak on my behalf rather than the behalf of the city, right, is accusing me, not the city, of ethics violations. All right, uh, 3, 6.2, Fire Chief report.
Assuming everybody's had a chance to read it. Nothing too crazy for, for the month of October.
Calling on us to bet it.
Calls down the lot.
Busy Saturday or Sunday?
Uh, Sunday, we had a little slide through intersection accident, yeah. And it was at a point where the one side of the road was and the other side wasn't, and she happened to be on the side that wasn't. But, uh, yeah, no, our, our calls have, yike, like, there's a bottom of the bucket that I hope doesn't open up, but, uh, yeah, it's been very quiet.
It's a good thing.
It is a good thing.
Your trucks on, on target?
Yeah, um, the chassis was shipped to, um, New York last week, and, uh, the body's being put onto it. We're hoping to go down for a final inspection sometime in the middle of December. So, um, what I was explaining to me was that, um, uh, the company that we bought it from, they don't go and pick it up. They have it, uh, shipped by the manufacturer.
They'll go and have the driver back.
Yeah, as soon as we touch it, then the 21-day, uh, clock kicks in, and then we have 21 days to pay for it. So they have it shipped by the company up to Winnipeg, and as soon as it arrives on the day it arrives in Winnipeg, that's when the 21-day, uh, payment thing kicks in.
What if we don't touch it?
Well, Key Wait has to touch it, as soon as Key Wait touches it, then, uh, the clock starts ticking, so. It, uh, we're, we're expecting it to be sometime just before Christmas. So for us to receive it will be probably early in the new year.
So you say we're going to, when to look at it?
Uh, middle of, probably the middle of December. Check my calendar here.
So when it gets to Winnipeg, then they just put on the, the last of the equipment, that's the end?
Yeah, there's some, uh, two- mounting, uh, the deckling. There's a company out of Eli that's done the last two of ours, three of ours, actually. So, uh, the deckles can put on, um, all of the tools that we're removing off of our existing one, we'll then get transferred over. So, but Winkler on notice for that week or so, that we will, we'll be without a rescue. So, yeah, there's just a couple of, of things that need to be done during that time. Radio install, that kind of stuff.
So it will have to be correctly paid in 2018, right?
Um, no, necessarily, no. No, they won't, they won't expect any payment from us until it's actually at our home.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, I was reading about this water tanker, that RM Stanley's buying.
It's a proposed budget for next year. We won't have seen it yet.
Okay.
But it's a, it's a proposed thing that we're-
It was on Pembroke Valley Online, I think, this one.
I know, there's a lot of Pembroke Valley Online stuff this past weekend that has driven me up the wall.
Okay, so, so just shut it off right now?
Yeah.
No, that's the one that Winkler has done.
I know, but they talked about Morden's.
Well, I know, I shared that with Andy too, yeah.
They, they, yeah, I'm just going to start.
Okay, good.
All right, any other questions, comments? 6.3, Police Chief report.
All right, my report has been circulated, if anybody has any questions.
What's with the bikes?
Uh, yeah, it's, we, we think we got ahold of the one individual that's responsible, so that should start to settle down.
Somebody must have found a good market for it.
Yeah. It was expensive ones.
Did you find expensive ones?
Found a couple of expensive.
Did you?
But there's still outstanding ones.
Okay.
Yeah, so we hope that, that'll be put to rest for a little while anyway.
Nobody ever steals mine.
Yeah, mine neither, it's not worth a lot.
I loaned mine to the immigration program, so I don't have to look at it every day.
Scrapyards have been getting a lot of them, and that's where, yeah, like, they'll take a load of bikes in and they'll get 60 bucks.
Now, they gotta know that they're, oh, yeah.
That's why you get, that's why they pay cash, scrapyards, there's no records.
Crazy.
Other questions? If, if not, then just working on budget preparation for 2020, as well as staff evaluation. If, if not, then just working on budget preparation for twenty twenty as well as staff evaluations. We're going through, uh, before the end of the year. And then just a comment to, on the heels of the storm there and, uh, with our phone system in our, in our office. I guess we found out we don't have a backup on our landline, so, so that's something we should, we used to have. I, I'm not sure what happened there, but when our, when the power went out, our, our phones went out. We still had nine-one-one, but nobody was able to call, and our calls are, um, forwarded to Brandon, so they, they weren't able to get phone calls through. People could still call nine-one-one, and they could radio us, so, but that's something we should make sure is there.
Yeah, power field phone, yeah.
Yeah.
Brandon Mantova, he said he referred it to Brandon, I was like, "I didn't answer my phone." That's why the fire calls are down.
Yeah.
Where were you?
Yeah, and then just, there's no clearance thing, but...
How are you making out with your new officer?
Uh, coming along, well, he hasn't started yet, of course.
Well, you've heard somebody, or you've picked somebody?
We have, yes, and, uh, I think I mentioned that last meeting today.
Yeah, oh, do you?
Yeah, we just haven't announced it yet until he actually starts, um, in January. He'll go for training to Saskatchewan Police College. Uh, just working on getting him all kitted up, and, uh, he has to do some preliminary fitness testing for the college before then, so...
This is how I find out my application was rejected?
Pretty much. So, sorry. You're still on my list of calls.
You can try for Andy, he's looking for...
He doesn't have enough washing machines to...
They're looking for somebody from two AM to six AM.
That's a little time I'm available.
There you go.
Yeah.
And that's all I have.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just go back a little bit? You just jogged my memory here about, uh, turnout gear for the council day that you're, you're going, going to Brandon's.
Yeah, I, I went and mentioned it to Dennis, but...
Yeah.
We aren't quite sure if, if the twenty-second is available still.
They haven't answered you back yet whether you're, there's a spot for you or not?
We haven't, uh, pursued it.
Okay, 'cause there, there's three, I think, I believe there's three, um, time, time slots, right?
Yeah.
Whenever, whatever time slot you guys get put into?
December thirteenth was one, I think, and then March eighteenth, I think.
Yeah, there's one in March too, yeah.
It's, it's almost thinking that it's probably gonna be March, 'cause December isn't gonna be any better than...
No, no, that's not gonna...
Than the twenty-second.
No, that's kind of a tough...
And the twenty-second might be too late.
Yeah.
It's probably full.
But at any rate, whenever you get, uh, you know, your, your spot...
Yeah.
Uh, just come see, we, we can get you suited up. 'Cause we have, uh, was it roughly about twelve sets now that we've got doubles on?
Okay.
So, we can, we can use up some of the guys' doubles.
Very clean?
Yep. We've, we've, yeah, we're in that, they're in the clean cab program now, so we're, we're actually good now.
Okay, thanks for doing that.
Yeah, so we, we can get you completely set up.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I have, I have bad fortune in fire dryer suits.
Yeah, well, we may give you a dirty one, just so, 'cause we don't have to wash when we get it back.
Very good, thank you.
All right, we'll have fun at it, I know that.
Can I, uh...
Yes.
Sorry, backup one more here. I was just waiting for media release to go out, and it has gone out. Just wanted to mention that apparently over the Halloween, the trick-or-treating night, we had a report a couple of days ago of a needle inside a licorice, Twizzler licorice package. So, we just sent something out this morning for parents to check all their candy, like packaged stuff, and even homemade stuff, obviously. So, that's unfortunate. We're hoping parents just choose to throw all the candy out, actually, having found this now.
Too late, kids have all eaten it then, actually.
Well, there's still, this one was just found a couple of days ago or one day ago. So, kids are still, some are patient.
Young child?
Sorry?
Doesn't matter, young child or not. With young child, they would know what area they covered.
Well, we, they think they know where they got it from.
Yeah.
But kids don't pay attention when they're running back and forth.
Yeah, I hear you.
That's too weird. Yeah, they think they, they know, have an area narrowed down. It's, it's hard to say, unless we get more reports. We are hoping and not hoping we get maybe some other reports that can maybe help us connect it, but it's unfortunate.
Is it possible that it was just, it fell into the bag, or you think it was, somebody did it on purpose?
No, no, it was placed within the candy.
Oh, it was placed within, okay.
The, the needle was pushed into the candy.
Wow, second individuals, I'll tell ya.
Through the packaging, through the packaging, so, very unfortunate.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be a Lindell Crescent, 'cause we only had six, and two of them were grandkids.
Well, we had about a dozen, Jimmy, and I had enough, I've got a hundred and fifteen candy bars.
Whole size, full size?
Well, I keep telling the wife, like, there, you gotta have five of those to make up one candy bar.
We probably had a hundred and forty or so.
Really?
Yeah.
Maybe it was fifty-five.
We had two hundred, I think, something in that range, but we were giving out Play-Doh, so no candies.
Zero. I wasn't home, so no one got it.
Yeah, the little containers of, uh, of Play-Doh.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
So, that's why you...
Well, it's not full anthrax.
They're lying in there in the back each time. I guess they know where to go.
Yeah, we've had some doubles come, we knew that.
That's the expensive area.
Yeah, they go to the high risk.
Well, that is not cool.
No, thank you.
Okay, six point four, mayor report. I'm gonna start producing an actual report, I think, and circulate it with the committee, 'cause I, by the time I get here. The features, uh, the events, November fifth, Hockey Canada, of course, um, drop ceremony, a puck award thing, Player of the Game. Then I had a few other engagements with that weekend. November seventh, uh, boy, what did you know, November seventh? I, I, I did work on a report, started on a report last night, then I got tired, um, 'cause it was like two in the morning. November seventh, of course, attended the remembered state service at Maple Leaf School, uh, attended the Morton District Chamber of Commerce Awards banquet on the seventh. The tenth, uh, remembered state supper at Morton Legion, and eleventh, remembered state service and luncheon provided. Of course, uh, bulk of what I'm doing right now is just amalgamating, uh, performance review for the city manager, as well as, um, uh, trying to, uh, get, keep the attention of, um, internet providers, make sure that we're moving forward on that, so, that's been my two weeks. All right, six point five, one, external organizations. Well, there we go, actually, ten, yeah. Okay, six point five, one, external organizations, Morton Veterinary Services District Board, it's a grant request. It says, "Please accept this as our application to the city board for a grant to offset the two thousand and nineteen taxes applicable to the pound area of the Morton Vet Clinic secondary building. I've calculated the amount as follows, two thousand and nineteen pound tax calculation is per information from Ryan McGee, Health Assessment Services Office. Calculations, and their request is one thousand six hundred and ten dollars seventy cents."
Right on that, they're asking us to refund a portion of the, uh, school taxes too, are they not?
Yeah.
I can sort of speak to that, I guess, uh, she actually called me on October thirtieth. Yeah, sent this request in in July, but they hadn't heard, but, uh, this is something that we, Doug and Hank, we've done this ever since the new pound was built, right?
No, it was after.
No, it was when the new pound was built, but that's when it started happening. I, I recall that very, very well. But, uh, this is something that's been done on a regular basis, um, just for the pound portion, just for the new pound portion. And, uh, they were, I guess, asking about it because, I mean, they, they have a extremely small budget, like sixty thousand, sixty-one thousand dollars, which is all made up of basically utilities and the taxes they pay the city, Morton, and stuff, and, um... So, I guess, since this has been done since the new pound was coming to place, they, they sort of rely on that, I suppose.
Yeah, we haven't refunded the, the school.
I think we haven't last, uh, that, that I recall, unless it changed last, unless it changed last while.
I think so either, but I don't know.
The calculation was consistent, I think, with...
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's consistent, it's, so, but, I mean, it's, uh, normally, we wouldn't probably have even taken this, right, Patrick? Normally, 'cause we, I, you and I talked about this, but because most of the council probably doesn't know about this, right? We figured we should just bring it up.
And it was, it's not part of our, our listed ones either.
Right.
So, um, we just wanted to make sure it came to council, 'cause it's over the eight-hundred-and-fifty limit that council can approve.
Right.
So, we have to do it this way. We may consider adding it into a list. We didn't have, part of the issue was, we didn't really have a policy surrounding this one, so I had to, couldn't figure out, like, why have we just been doing it? Like, what was the, what was the procedure on this one?
This would be the first one that we would do that school taxes on it, 'cause I don't remember doing school taxes.
You can double check, but...
I think, I think you'll find this is consistent.
Since I've been here anyway, I don't know what it, how long it's been.
I can always remember it being this way, but...
Well, we did school taxes on the Activity Center, that was this year.
On which?
The Activity Center.
Help me, activities.
Uh, for Activity, Friendship Center.
Oh, the Friendship Center, we did, school taxes?
Yeah. We did the full song.
Boy, new to me, whatever. Setting a dangerous precedent.
I'm almost sure, I'm almost, I'm almost sure that this is consistent with what we've done since day one from the pound, but you can maybe check to make sure.
I could, yeah, they would, we would have the previous letters, I would think. I guess they're, they're, they're coming up where they're not specifically asking for the money back, it's just that's how they come up with the grant portion. They're saying, "Well, this is our property taxes, this is that particular building," or whatever, "this is how much that building costs, this is the taxes," so...
Yeah, because it was back...
Interesting part is that why are, like, that is being used for the municipality too, not just the city of Morton, so we're, we're, we're contributing...
All three communities.
Well, for sure too, now, because Winkler has their own, since this was built, Winkler built their own, um, vet clinic, so I don't know if they're doing it.
They have a vet clinic, but not pound?
Yeah.
The pound is shared between all three?
The pound is, so, then we pay the taxes and we give the, uh, a grant. Like, what do we give to the vet and Morton?
We don't pay the taxes, they pay the taxes to us. They pay eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
No, they're asking for a grant back.
No, I don't, but I'm saying, like, the, the pound, the vet clinic pays city Morton taxes on the building, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, I see.
Eighteen, four, just over, just over eighteen thousand dollars. So, they do pay the taxes on it.
Eighteen, how's that? If that includes school taxes.
That may be eighteen thousand, two sixty-five.
Maybe, only?
Well, that would be their total tax.
Thank you.
So, I know this has been ongoing for, I, I'm not sure when the pound was built, it's probably eight, nine, or, or we was right about that, I can't remember exactly.
Is that like an extra building they put up?
Yeah, I'm just on the outside.
Well, I have a, we have, um, with the Reeve and Martin, maybe I'll see if we'll come sharing this.
This has to come back to council anyway.
Yeah, yeah. I would just be recommending to council.
Okay. All right. Okay, next one, six point, uh, five-two, six point five point two, Katie Cares, this, they made a presentation at last year's, uh, strategic planning session, requesting, uh, grant for Katie Cares, or, uh, it's a five-year grant, or...
Five-year? I think we did have a five-year at eighteen, right?
Yeah, so then there's no ongoing, uh, commitment, so it's just kind of a...
We looked at it this year in July when they came and did a presentation, or whenever it was, and, uh, we said at that time we would look at it for twenty twenty budget.
It's probably, like, I actually was, if you want to ask Michelle to put it back on, just for, I'm not sure whether they were ever communicated to, because they, they, they presented to us when in...
July eight.
Well, that's, that's when their follow-up letter was. Their, their, their initial presentation to us was early.
Yeah, it was, it was November.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And then, and then they pulled it up again, July was the letter.
June tenth.
Yeah, that was their follow-up. Uh, the, this was prior to the presentation, or after your presentation, the letter. Their presentation was in November, I think, or March.
Yeah, we didn't reply to them.
Didn't reply to them, so...
I know, uh, under our, we have, we have approved a hundred thousand dollars, and then now the budgets have one thirty-six as a budget. Uh, I think thirty-six of that was pre-committed.
There's more than just the, the thirty-six thousand is art gallery, so that's separate from the hundred thousand.
Okay.
Yes, yes, I would, that's where I was a little confused, because I know in the past, that hundred thousand always included the art gallery. That, that's why that, that confused me a little bit.
But we can still keep it to a hundred thousand.
What's that?
We still have room to keep it to a hundred thousand, even with the, with the art gallery in it, right?
Oh, yeah, like, with the art gallery included, hundred thousand lots, but that's why I couldn't understand the hundred thirty-six, that's... And it was always, the art gallery was always part of the, the hundred thousand, in the past.
So, it was consistent with the prior year.
What are you proposing for Katie Cares, uh, for this year?
Well, I, I just, I just thought we should maybe discuss it if, if council doesn't, isn't interested, I mean, at least we should respond to them, right?
I think it should be included, let's look at it with our other grants for twenty twenty.
They were given a dollar per capita?
We did for their cap build, just to build the, the building, and I don't know if ongoing is, that's what we did to get them started and, uh...
It was a five-year, five-year agreement, I believe, it was.
It was ended last year.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just looking, uh...
When do we talk about all the grants that we, all the other organizations that we get to?
That's during the budget time.
Budget time?
Yeah.
Okay, so, can we include this in there?
That's, yes, that's part of it, because it says that, I don't believe it will then fall with eye towards twenty twenty budget. So, once we are working on twenty twenty budget, that will be discussed along with other applicants.
Okay, so, I think it was discussed during twenty nineteen budget, but we removed it for...
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Yeah, so it was considered.
So, even if we take out, even if we say the hundred thousand includes the art gallery, and we, we approved a hundred thousand dollars for grants to organizations, would it be your, your recommendation to continue to make payments or make grants out of that fund, or, or use it for overruns?
To Kadiq?
Well, I'm just looking at what we have left in, uh, line one thirty-five. Uh, if, if you take out the, the, if you say it's a hundred thousand including the thirty-six to the art gallery, we still have twenty-five, roughly twenty-five, twenty-six thousand left us, left in that account.
But they're asking, like, because similar as what we had done in the past, like, five-year one, then they were asking, they presented their, um, they made a presentation last year, and then council didn't consider that, uh, council considered that during twenty nineteen budget cycle, but didn't approve any further funding from them, for them. So, now, like, we are going to look at again for twenty twenty.
Okay.
And, uh, we cannot say for sure at this point in time that, because, uh, we need to look at our overall budget, like, where we are at, whether we have a surplus or not, and, because in some areas we may be under, but other areas we may be over, makes no removal. So, we may need to balance it off, so we cannot make decision at this point.
So, your recommendation is not to go to the, to the, to the, um, not to spend on that, on that one thirty-five to the hundred?
We are looking at, like, in twenty twenty, we will make a recommendation, like, we, not in twenty nineteen, because council made the decision in twenty, for twenty nineteen budget. So, while considering twenty twenty budget cycle, we will definitely include them and then make them part of our discussion.
Right.
So, the twenty nineteen budget, we didn't, uh, we said no?
Yes.
Well, we, we said as people came, we, you know, we would make a decision, up to, up to a hundred thousand dollars.
There is a discretionary amount...
Yeah.
In the budget, right, because there are certain committed ones.
There's committed ones that are always on the list.
And there's a discretionary amount.
My question is, their ask is for twenty nineteen, or they're asking us for twenty twenty in all? Or how much they're asking for twenty nineteen then, if their ask is for twenty nineteen?
Would it be the same formula?
They don't ask for anything, but the formula is up to us. We did that a dollar per capita to help them with their capital expense to start the building, like, to do the building project itself, not the operating cost. Now, looks like they're asking for operating grant, and so that's a different amount then. 'Cause the three municipalities of that, they, uh, each put in a dollar per capita.
What did they do with now?
What did they do it now?
I saw that.
Like Winkler and.
The administration, I have to check, I don't know.
Because like, uh, like we were talking about vet clinic, they were asking certain amount that they would like to get that grant from us. And, uh, I haven't received any kind of a particular amount from KDC. So that may, can make a decision on the basis of that here today. Suppose if they're asking certain amount, then we can say, okay, we have that much.
I think we should get back to them and let them know that it will can be considered for 2020 budget.
I was just gonna suggest that to you, at, at least, at least write them a letter saying, saying that we will consider it. Just so they at least have some feedback, because they have asked us twice now, right, so.
So it's a four-year group funding agreement?
Was it four years?
Yeah. In January twenty-eight, twenty fifteen.
Okay.
Yeah, to twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Twenty eighteen.
Yeah. Okay. Six point five-point-three, uh, River Basin Commission, success, sixth annual gala and, uh, sponsorship attendance.
Yeah, and I think.
Is, is Counselor Penner still there?
Yes, I am.
Did you want to speak to this?
Um, I don't know if council has ever sponsored this, or, and I talked to Urb Week, because he sat on the Pembina Valley Water Co-op board. Uh, I think he's attended this dinner in the past, but Marv Platt, uh, is on both Pembina Valley Water Co-op and, uh, City of Winkler Council. And he just approached me at the last, uh, Water Co-op board meeting if Morton would, uh, provide a three hundred dollar donation to the South Chapter. So, you know, I, I guess it's similar to supporting Pembina Valley Water Co-, or Pembina Valley Conservation District. Um, you know, we get our water into the lake from the west, but the Co-op is, is pulling water from the east through the Red River, so, um, that's a connection there.
Okay. What's your recommendation as our water person?
So, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I can't hear you, so.
Oh, sorry, I'll speak out.
Oh, I know why, hold on.
He's got us muted. Or we have her muted, right?
Sorry. Now I can hear you.
Okay, what's your recommendation?
Well, you know, I guess originally I didn't think about attending the dinner, because our Board of Revisions was set for November twenty-first. You know, uh, I guess we're part of the water, Pembina Valley, yeah, Pembina Valley Water Co-op, we sit on their board. Uh, this is sort of a bigger picture. Um, I mean, they do have forty-four board members, including, you know, locals or within, uh, the south region. But then all the, the, the provincial ministers and deputy ministers are part of this board too. So, I mean, water's, uh, always going to be, uh, an issue with, uh, with everybody, so. I guess support there is, uh, just being part of the, the bigger team.
Okay. So you, you're, you're involved with them on a regular basis, right?
Yes, uh, with the Pembina Valley Water Co-op, I've never been involved with the Red River Basin. And, and that is, uh, you know, uh, two, Minnesota, North Dakota, and, and Manitoba are part of the Red River Basin. So it's a, uh, tri-province, uh, or, you know, three-member, uh, organization, where you've got the US, uh, and Canada. Because of course the red comes through international borders.
I don't think we've ever, ever participated in it.
Well, not, I don't know from the last couple of years, but for sure part of that, I can't ever recall.
Okay, three hundred dollars didn't matter to me, but it's just, we never.
What's the benefit to us?
Well, we send our water to the Red River, that's, yeah.
But we also have backup from water coming from the Red River if we ever, uh, you know, like a couple of years ago when the pipe was broken at the golf course and we didn't lose pressure, because we could tap into the, the Co-op water immediately, so, uh.
That's Pembina Valley Water Co-op though.
Yeah, but our water comes from that source.
From, there's a difference.
From river, is there?
Well, no, because our water comes, a lot of our water from Pembina Valley Water Co-op comes through the Red River, and the Basin Commission controls the quality of the stuff going back in that we're pulling back out, or could be. Are you interested in increasing your, your, uh, presence with that commission? Because they're constantly emailing, asking for a member for their board.
Uh, Greg Archibald has asked if, uh, Morton would be interested in getting more involved with the Red River, uh, Basin. So I said I'd bring it back to council.
Are you legal to enter the states for meetings?
Well, Fargo would be the, the hub, uh, it, it wouldn't take you much further, so. I, I guess there's a couple of options here, where we don't do a three hundred dollar donation and, uh, either just attend the, the dinner, because, uh, it is a fundraising dinner on November twenty-first. I'm, I'm, uh, Michelle, and we would attach the, uh, invitation as I hand out. I'm not sure what the dinner tickets are worth.
Thirty bucks or two hundred?
Are they only thirty bucks, so?
Two ten per table.
So, you know, maybe this year we just, one of us or someone from council attends the dinner, finds out what they're all about, bring it back, and then see if we want to, uh, further contribute.
Okay, would you be willing to attend it?
You know, the, the city does, uh, support other, uh, organizations, uh. So I don't know where you put this on the ranking of, uh, of water, you know, part of our sustainability.
Would, would, are you willing to, to attend the banquet?
Yeah, if, uh, now that the, um, if the Board of Revision is, the dates changed, then there's not a conflict, uh, then November twenty-first is still available. I've not double booked that date.
That's thirty dollars, that's just a tax reduction or a season or what the actual tickets are. It just says, all tickets qualify for a tax, you have to receive that three dollars.
I just read.
I wonder if that's.
It'll be fifty dollars.
Two, two, I don't know.
I'm just, it doesn't really matter, but.
Okay, so if we, if we present a motion to have you attend that and then, uh, bring a recommendation, is that good to you?
Yeah, that's good, and then for next year, look at, uh, funding.
Yeah.
Or supporting them through a, a donation.
Then we can look at as part of our strategic plan, sure. Okay.
So then, do we, do I notify Marv Platt or someone from the city that, um, you know, we're, we're gonna pass on, uh, uh, a donation of three hundred dollars this year and, and?
Yeah, Marvin asked you, so get back to Marvin.
Yeah, okay.
Just, just make sure that they know we're exploring the value of the organization.
What was that, Brandon?
Maybe if we just let them know, you're gonna attend and explore the value of their organization or what impact they have on us. Uh, and then we'll make it part of our strategic plan for 2020.
Sounds good. I'll take that message back, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, six point five-point-four, Pembina Valley Water Co-op, Greg Archibald. I think this is you again, Counselor Penner, or Deputy Mayor Penner, sorry.
Yeah, Greg Archibald is the CEO of Pembina Valley Water Co-op, and as a board member on that, uh, organization, he would like to come and just, uh, speak with council and background them a bit on, on the Co-op. So he would like to attend a committee of the whole meeting, uh, just for logistics and if the council's all together, that would make sense. He would like sort of half an hour to an hour, forty-five minutes, uh, presentation. Um, he's, they're looking at December or January Committee of the Whole to attend. So we will, first of all, if council is, um, interested in having the Co-op present to council, then we'll get back to him and find out his schedule, whether December or January's, uh, an appropriate month.
Okay. Uh, would he be willing to do it maybe before a council meeting? If that was in the evenings again?
Find out his availability?
Yeah, just because those are the types of things with our new youth council member. I think it would be, uh, good to have those kinds of informational pieces available to her as well. I think there's a lot of value to that, so there's some backgrounding for her and, and, um, it also makes it a little easier for us.
I think there's, there is good value to bring, uh, the information directly to council from the CEO. So do you want me to confirm his dates of availability and, and let the?
Sure, that'd be good.
Okay.
Thanks.
The proposed, uh, new meeting dates for the new year, the, the committee of the whole meeting is nine in the morning.
Yeah, so she, he came before a council meeting.
Okay, before school or whatever.
At five for the Greenwich meeting, whatever, five thirty, whatever.
Okay.
Have there been, um, Michelle, have there been every, any other requests for presentations to council for December or January? That we'd have too many, um?
No, not.
Time-wise, that it would work?
Not yet, there hasn't been anyone.
Okay, then I'll, I'll get back to Greg tomorrow and, uh, see what suits him best, and I'll, I'll report back to council and, and you.
Sounds good.
Do you know if we've published for, um, our, for organizations that want to present that are strategic planning sessions? Should we be?
I'm sorry, Mayor Burley, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm just mumbling about strategic planning sessions. Uh, wondering if, if we widely circulate that or if it's just a group that we know of.
For strategic planning, we haven't in the past, have we, or have you? I can't, I haven't recalled, but.
For budget, we have come.
Yeah, for budget, yeah, but not sure.
We call people, like, the ones that we want to, can, want, wanted to ask questions of, we've invited them to a half-hour presentations.
Okay.
But it's whatever this council wants. You can sort of set that, Brandon, if you want.
Sure. Okay, uh, six point seven. Proposed 2020 council, three, the whole meeting schedule. You have that as, uh, part of your agenda too.
Can I just interrupt for a second?
Sure, yeah.
Item six point nine technically usually is in camera item.
Right, I was just gonna mention.
Historically has been.
Really? Okay, good. Because when I checked with, uh, HR, she mentioned that, oh, it's, uh, irregular.
Okay.
So we, we can put it in in camera.
Historically has been. It was in camera last year.
I just want to make it know that I did consult municipal services about that, and they said that it doesn't have to be in camera, because it's a policy and you're not discussing whether certain employees are going to get it. It's just a general policy, so it doesn't have to be in camera.
Good.
If we agree to this, uh, schedule, can you just set it up? You just entered right into our computers, I think that's what Kelsey did last year.
Yep, I can do that.
Thanks.
Okay, any, uh, any problems with the schedule, it was already, uh, mentioned.
I guess we better not miss that AMM district meetings this year. We missed those last year.
Yeah, I'm, you've got, yeah.
They always tell, hold in the morning after we get back from FCM. Literally nine AM the next morning, eight-thirty the next morning. I was supposed to come back from Quebec City at two-thirty in the morning, and be up in McGregor for eight-thirty.
Well, I was sitting, sitting, having coffee and more sauce and asked her if we're going, I said, I didn't know anything about it. So that's why.
Maybe this year I just sleep over in Portage or something.
Yeah.
Once the dates become available, I'll notify council.
Okay, okay. All right, six eight, uh, council members leave of absence, that's page sixty-one, your supplementary agenda. Anybody have a problem with, you're not going away, eh?
I am going.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Hebert.
Well, uh, my brothers are all taken off, so I guess I'm elected to look after mother for the life. Well, she doesn't think about her own, does she? She looks like she does. Yeah, well, she doesn't realize it though.
Okay. So Counselor Maddick and Counselor Hebert wouldn't even have to get these dates approved per the act. It would just be that one for the two council meetings for, and the, and the committee of the whole for Counselor Hillibrand.
Counselor Hillibrand, he's done this too many times, I think we should refuse it.
Tell my wife that.
No Skyping allowed either.
Don't you want Skyping?
No.
Why not?
My question be, if you're on holidays, why would you want to?
Relocate.
Really, why would you want to?
Well, you want to know what's going on.
If I want holidays, that's the last thing I would want.
Hey, that's you though. I would want to participate.
Do what I do, don't go on holidays.
Well, I've done that for many years, so that's the reason. If you get to be my age, you'll want to go to.
Okay.
I realize technically you wouldn't have to, but I would still prefer that was, just, just so it's more. I mean, I, I would, I wouldn't mind it.
What's that?
That, I mean, technically, because we're not missing three in a row.
Yeah, right.
Technically, you don't have to, but I mean, I would still prefer that was approved, just so it's.
Well, because a mirror can call, call him a council meeting within twenty-four hours.
Ninety-four, one says regularly scheduled meetings.
Just so it's.
Well, then I don't have to either.
No.
No.
Regular meetings.
But it's committee of the whole meeting. So you would have three.
Right.
If they're absent for the full duration of three consecutive regular meeting council meetings.
Yeah, council says.
I'm sure if you buy us enough coffee and donuts, we can let you prove it for you.
No problem. I can buy some tequila if you want. You know, I don't drink.
Well, I'm open to that too.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't drink.
But it does give provisions in here for meeting through electronic communications.
Yeah, one fifty-point-one. Blows you too, if you want to.
We'll get back to you on that one.
My question is this, if you, if, if you don't connect via?
Well, that's the problem, like, your connectivity, right? If all of a sudden art connection fails, or the one out there fails, or wherever you are, then, yeah, you.
But if you don't attend the meeting, you come back mentally refreshed and, uh.
Glad you said mentally refreshed.
Who wasn't Skyped in that one time and it went off, on, off. We just shut it off. I think it was, I think it was you. You're the only one that Skyped on the announce here.
Phone doesn't have that capability?
We'll just get, it shuts you off.
No, no, a different term.
We gave you the view outside.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was last year with Brandon.
This shouldn't be this hard.
No, but I, I was followed last year, I was in.
Yeah, well, section one fifty allows you to, if you're able and willing.
So then this comes to council again for motion?
Yeah.
Good, all right.
Not six point nine will deal with.
Well, you don't have to, you say, it can be dealt with here.
Yeah, six point nine Christmas bonuses, uh, I will read this.
But, uh, question, the amount does not fall off the policy, so.
It's not?
No.
The amount which is giving.
I was told that it does, I mean, I, I suppose it should, but you're not discussing individual employees and whether or not they get it. It's just a general.
Percentage or whatever.
Yeah.
Sure. So you want to change the policy to, there's an exclusion in here, because this is the first time it was in there. Well, I guess it's been there since 2015, I couldn't remember that. Anyway, we didn't give, uh, the city manager a bonus in here, because how could, the thought was, how can he recommend a, a bonus to staff and him getting, being a benefactor of it? So his is the one that he didn't receive a bonus. And this was the first time that that happened. Previous, uh, city managers, they get bonus.
Your recommendation stays the same?
Well, I'm.
Well, if, if the city manager gets a bonus, that should be approved or recommended in camera, because it would involve a specific.
Specific, yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's the only thing.
So what's your recommendations?
Well, say it up for, well, that too.
Well, I do, being, if I can be vocal about it, I mean, you want to talk about the amount? Yeah, I do, I, I mean, we have certain staff that are unionized and they negotiate their salaries, and we have staff that don't negotiate their salaries. And to my, the way my thinking is, and it can be debated, and I'm sure it will be, is that, uh, the, uh, I, I would abandon the Christmas bonus totally, and I would, I would include the amount in the people's salaries, which is essentially what we're doing anyway, because the amount that you give them at Christmas is a taxable income or taxable benefit. They got to pay a tax on it anyway. So in my mind, I would just include it in their salaries.
That might have to force how we would even come back next time, say, look, these other positions doing similar work are getting more than us now. Therefore, we should be getting it too.
If you say it's all debatable, I'm thinking, no, it's just included in the salary range.
That has been, that has been, I talked about it before, right?
Yeah, we talked about it last year.
Well, even prior to that, there was, there was talk of, of including it in salaries. And I think the feeling then was, I still believe this. Uh, there's a lot of employees who, who really count in this little bit of a little Christmas time.
That's what I was thinking. That's what I was like, it's just separate accounts to just this time. Yeah, when I was with the city, the guys were looking, when is it coming, when is it coming? And I said, why not come? Don't depend on it.
Exactly.
And I knew it was coming, but.
Anyway, I said my piece. Some staff negotiate their salaries and they're, and others don't and the ones that don't, in my opinion, is that's again, I don't want to just repeat this also, it's.
Well, I, I'd make a motion to pay two fifty again this year to exclude that eligible employees.
And just keep the piece.
And of course that gets, I mean, that goes through the payroll system.
Of course, then I guess council get it too, then.
No.
No, you don't. No, no.
Gosh, I would recommend that, let's go. I'd recommend that.
And would you include the city, well, you can't talk about that one, that'd go anywhere.
All right.
So that comes here or that has to go to council too, right?
Also to council.
Resolution to go in camera?
Yeah.
Okay, we need a, a secondary for in camera, second to go in camera.
Yeah.
Moved by councillor Hillbrand. Seconded by councillor Frost.
We're gonna check your cameras up. Thank you.
We need to go in camera.